Welcome to Selectmen's Meeting, January 5th, 2017, 6 o'clock. It's a Thursday. It's mostly a special Selectmen's Meeting relative to the town warrant articles and that. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everybody. Looks like we see a lot of familiar faces, don't we? Meeting's called to order. First thing we're gonna do is introduce Jackie Sears as one of the select persons, James Labrie as the other, and myself, Charlie Konecki. There are no appointment schedules, there are no hearing schedules. There is open time for the public, so I will entertain anybody from the public. Hearing none. I think what we're gonna do is jump over to the warrants, payroll warrants. Payroll warrant, P-17 hyphen 26A was for $1,777.57, signed by me on December 28th. Payroll warrant, 17 hyphen 26, was $247,470.96, signed by me December 28th. Payroll deduction warrant, DP-17 hyphen 26, $45,950.26, signed by me December 28th. Payroll deduction warrant, PD-17 hyphen 26A, was $176,002.84, signed by me December 28th. Do we have other warrants?
These are the other two you were talking about?
Yeah. Do you wanna read those in?
Sure. Warrant, W-17 dash 27 dated 1/5/2017, for $389,972.67. Warrant, P-17 dash 26B, dated 12/29/2016, for $214.20. That's all I have.
All accepted by the board? Okay.
Yep.
Alright, old business. First old business was the contract for our Police Department police officers. That contract has been completed. Do I hear a vote to accept that contract?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
No discussion?
Good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, contract's approved. We're gonna need to sign this now. Three copies. Keep hearing that. This is the contract that's gonna appear in the town warrant as retroactive funding. It's gonna be one of the warrant articles. Mr. Labrie?
It's the same thing?
Yeah, they're all the same.
Yep.
Hey, Jackie. I have Harley Davidson licenses, which doesn't appear on the agenda.
No.
This just came in.
Yes.
Is everything in order?
Everything is in order.
Got these four?
That's a license for Harley Davidson for entertainment.
That came in this afternoon, entertainment.
So, 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. So it's standard to 11 o'clock at night, there's no problems with that. I have no problem with that.
Make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, sign it up.
It was signed in two places, that's it?
I believe so.
I think that's it.
You go, Jackie.
Just two, right?
Yeah, those are disappointing documentation.
Okay.
Okay.
Bob?
Bob.
To Bob, onward, Bob.
If it gets lost in the pile.
Yeah, what about Bob?
What about Bob, yeah. Okay, another old business. Fire chief's contract. We've been in negotiations with the fire chief. We've set up a contract to start July 1st, 2017, to run for three years. I believe we've completed all negotiations. Is this board ready to move this forward?
I believe so.
Do I hear a motion signed?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Contract's approved for the fire chief. Chief, I need your signature.
Only one copy?
It's all I got.
The police get three, he gets one.
He's not in the union.
Okay. Just asking.
It's more trusting. He only got one. This is the police union. Okay.
He only get one signature.
Any other open in the business here?
We got everything, we're down to the warrant.
We're down to the warrant, then. Chief, it's up to you if you wanna sit here for the warrant, you're always welcome.
Goodnight.
Can I just have him watch it at home? You're very hard to hear sometimes.
It's very hard to hear here.
Will that help?
I'm not home, I can't find home.
Go home, and give me a call, let me know. Yes, Vicky, would you like to leave us a copy?
Is it something I have this afternoon?
You're asking me that? I have the extra sitting here if somebody wants a copy of the warrant. Does it look, George, like I'm vaulting over this to give it to you? Come on up here if you wanna. No, Virginia can't have one.
Wait a minute.
Did everyone get a copy that wanted a copy? Is anybody even paying attention to what I say? Alright, let's get into this. This is the warrant for town meeting, January 24th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM. This is the draft warrant, as of today. I'm gonna read the articles. I'm only gonna read the article numbers, and basically to highlight a section so we know what we're talking about. If someone has questions from the Finance Committee or wants to make comment, just signal me so I know. General bylaws, Health Department, Article 1, noncriminal disposition. Is the Health Department comfortable with this? Okay. Part 2, zoning bylaw, Article 2, Green Community Solar Bylaw Amendments. Jim, any feedback on that?
The Planning Board had their public hearing last night, and we are good with it.
Bob, are we clear with Town Council?
There was an ongoing discussion this afternoon. I did call Town Council again late this afternoon. We're clear on this. This is what we need in order to comply with the requirements for Green Communities.
It's my understanding if we need to modify it, we can modify it at the floor.
I don't believe we need any other modifications. We changed that 200 to 250, and this is good.
Alright.
Perfect.
Now, we get into financial items. Article 3, retroactive compensation for the police officers. That relates to the contract we just signed, comes down to $14,281.81. Finance recommends this. Article 4, prior year unpaid bill for a telephone line, $419.86. Finance Committee recommended this also. Article 5, transfer to police administration assistant, $4,608 was requested by the police chief to have an administrative assistant to help him with paperwork. Finance Committee's recommendation was not to approve that. Mike, if you wanna give a little explanation?
Sure. First off, I'll start. My name, Michael Rosenberg, Chairman of the Finance Committee, 144 East Street. Just a little information about the article and the warrant and what we've done in the past few days. We met on January 3rd to review the articles. One thing to remember is our recommendations do not determine if an article goes before the town meeting. That is the purview of the Select Board. We are purely an advising committee in this, we review and advise. We review for financial implications and concurrence with municipal budgeting practices. We try to be consistent with that. We do our best to properly vet and research the articles and strive to be consistent and equitable on all fronts with these. And as always, we are always open to discussion of our meetings, our recommendations, if there's questions or concerns, concerns about why we voted one way or another. You can contact us by email, our meetings are always posted. On that note, for Article 5, we did not recommend because it does go against that 2014 DLS report of utilizing free cash to fund something which will be a reoccurring expense. Knowing that this is a goal for 2018, we would essentially start utilizing free cash to fund a reoccurring expense this year. And it does seem counterintuitive to use free cash for three months this year when we're planning to fully fund it next year. You know, that free cash could be utilized somewhere else for an emergency, an operational issue, a capital purchase, something other than getting a new position started three months in advance of when we would fund it, or when we're planning to fund it. And then, if we're unable to fund it next year, we now have a person on the payroll that we can't afford to pay. That's the short of it.
Just a clarification. The proposal originally was to take the funding from operating stabilization, which would require a two-thirds vote. If you recall, yesterday, we changed it to free cash. I informed the police chief of that, but it looks like I didn't change the two-thirds to simple majority. So if we keep this article, it'll be simple majority.
Okay. So the question to the board is, do we keep this article? I'd like a motion. One way or the other.
Well, I agree that we shouldn't fund something on a free cash that's gonna be on an annual basis. That being said, I did meet with the police chief, and he did explain to me that he spends an awful lot of his hours during the day doing clerical work, because he doesn't have anybody to do that, so we're paying a police chief wage to do clerical work. If we can get it into the budget for next year, that'd be awesome, but between now and then, so that's almost six months of paying. This would go from... Is that it correct? This would go from now to?
It says March to June.
March to June.
I mean personally?
Yeah.
Because it's such a short window.
I'm on the fence on this one.
I wouldn't approve this article, I'd strike it.
Yeah, so it's three months, and if we can get it into the budget for, you know, starting July 1st, I think that'd be awesome. It is something that's really needed, because I think, like I said, paying the police chief wages for clerical duties, I think is not wise. So, yeah, I would vote to strike this, and let's see if we can't work it into the budget for next year.
Well... I need a microphone.
Yeah.
If I need a microphone, you need it.
It's so far away. Well, I don't think that Chief Goyet would ask for something if he didn't need it, and so I hate to strike it. I would rather keep it, but if it's not possible, then I'll have to agree.
I think for the fact that we're looking at March to June.
Right, it's minimal, yeah.
It's not enough window to... I would hate to hire somebody who did not be able to allocate money in July.
Right.
To keep that person.
Then you have to fire him.
Yeah.
If I make a motion, we strike Article...
But, Mike, you wanna say something?
No, I'm just standing here if there's other questions.
Oh, okay. I hear a motion to strike this article?
Article 5.
Article 5, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, article's stricken. Haley, did you get that? Okay, Article 6, prior year unpaid bill for the school lunch program. We're talking $13,574.91. It's for the school lunch program, there's a deficit right now. Finance requested a table list, and they've got more information, so I'd like to hear from the Finance if we have more information. So it's gone to the town accountant.
So in the process of closing the books for FY '16 and putting together the tax rate, this came up in discussion with the Department of Revenue, and we, as a town, have to cover any insufficient deficits in any other fund from the general fund. One way to do this is to put it on the tax recap, raise it through taxes, but then the town doesn't really know that that's kinda what you're doing unless someone asks that question. So, I spoke with Liz Moulton, who is the cafeteria manager, and we decided that the best route would be to go through the town to ask for the money to cover this. We already went through the school, but because the school didn't get their quality kindergarten grant, which is usually about $30,000, they have to make up those salaries in their general fund budget for those, for that $30,000. So they didn't have any extra money to put towards this. And doing some analysis, I found from 2008 until 2016, our collections for school lunch funds have gone drastically down, from $128,000 to $87,000. The state funding and the federal funding is based upon free lunch program, and so that fluctuates a little bit. But back in FY 2008, I can't, I don't have the physical papers in my office anymore from that timeframe, but I can look on the computer, and the Hampshire Regional School District did give the town $6,351 to make up some of that deficit. So the years prior to 2011, the school lunch fund was in a positive because of that $6,300. But one of the things that made this drastically negative this year was the school lunch program couldn't cover the cost of the school lunch monitors, which are not allowed by statute by Department of Education, school lunch program, to be paid out of this. So, the $13,000 is approximately majority of what we pay our school lunch monitors currently. And so, there's a plan in place. Liz Moulton spoke with the superintendent and the school department, and they are gonna put this in their budget for next year, because legally, we can't technically pay this out of there, which I didn't know till we had this conversation about this $13,000. So, that's where we're at right now with that, so... But we have to cover that deficit, it has to get covered somehow. We can't just keep carrying it on our books, so... And we're lucky we're not going to be where they have a $128,000 deficit for their school lunch program. So, $13,000 bucks doesn't seem too far.
Vicky, is that all for the school lunch monitors, or is part of that unpaid?
Like about $2,000 would be unpaid.
Okay.
But it's not uncommon, or not, it's not uncommon to have, you know, $1,000 or $2,000 of unpaid lunch, you know, money. People don't buy lunch. 10 years ago, you had 6,000 kids, 6,000 lunches in a month, and now you have 3,000 lunches in a month, and the food costs have gone up and everything, so... But part of that, most of that is due to the school lunch monitors, so... But the town has to cover that, so...
Any questions, Vicky? Then my question's to the Finance Committee, what's your position?
I would make the motion that we recommend this article. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm staying.
And based on that, we're just gonna move forward to the next article.
Yeah, go with it.
Article 7, transfer of free cash to the capital stabilization fund. This is in the amount of $173,943. This is money that was, that came in based on free cash, and the Select Board has always established a 35% annual transfer to the capital account to take and purchase large items for the town. Finance Committee has recommended this. Questions? This is standard housekeeping. Article 8, transfer of free cash to the stabilization fund. This is in the amount of $149,094 to the operational stabilization fund. This is basically our rainy day account. Again, the Selectmen had established that when we have free cash, 30% of that free cash would go into this account. Any questions? Finance approved that also. Article 9, transfer of free cash to the open fund. This is basically for post-employee benefits. We're looking at $49,689. This is, again, a policy of the Select Board to put 10% of free cash into that, so it's basically a bank account for retirement. And Finance has approved that. Okay, no questions on that. Article 10, signage at the Zipta Farm Conservation Area. Basically, we're talking $1,000. The town has already previously voted on that. However, in the original vote, there was a statement that certain photographs would be put on the sign. These photographs are not available, so we're basically modifying the language of the article to reflect what we're really doing here. Any questions, comments? More housekeeping than anything. And that was recommended by the Finance Committee. Article 11, funding of the town administrator's search. This is $5,000. This is a one-time expense. We're putting together a committee to start screening and researching for a new town administrator. Not that we don't enjoy Bob, but he's supposed to be just a filler for now. Finance Committee has recommended this.
Just on that note, we did recommend, based on the agreement, that it would be carried in a separate line item and would not be lumped into Select Board expenses. So this $5,000 transfer would end up in its own line item for town administrator's search.
Want to move to change the article to say that? I have no problem with that.
I have no problem with that.
Sounds good.
Bob, if you wanna change that motion a little bit to say that there's a line on them for expenses for a search of the town administrator?
In the Selectmen's budget.
In the Selectmen's budget, but there'll be a separate line on them. Article 12, prior year legal bill. There's a bill of $6,500 standing out there from 2016. This has been cleaned up in the language. I don't see any position on Finance with this on the printed copy.
We did recommend, I just, I don't think, please, that's wrong.
Okay, so that's recommended. Article 13, insurance for employees sick and injured time. The Board of Selectmen's had put in an article for $5,000 to buy insurance relative to that, because right now, we're self-insured. Finance Committee recommended that we do not do this, and that it be moved into next year's budget. My personal feeling is we just strike this article?
That's fine. You're gonna try working it in? I mean, hopefully, we can...
Correct, the idea, again, is creating a recurring account for cash.
We're listening to you, Mike. I know, it seems strange, don't it? Do I hear a motion to strike this article?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article 14, the purchase of a copier fax scanner for the accounting office. This is an amount of $4,000. This is obviously a needed piece of equipment. Finance Committee has recommended this. Any comments? Article 15, transfer additional funds to the tree warden. An amount of $2,500. Evidently, he's having problems with the trees. Finance Committee has recommended this. Any questions? I need to pick on the tree warden every now and then. Okay, moving on to the next one. Article 16, additional hours for the assessor's department clerk. This was $2,200. This was not recommended by the Finance Committee. I personally think we should strike this article?
I would imagine it's the same reason, because it's an annual...
I guess you could say that, the makeup of the assessor's office, the makeup of the positions and the hours.
Mike, I'm gonna make you go to a podium.
Mike, Mike.
So, yeah, part of it does have to do with possibly creating a reoccurring expense. The other is that the makeup of the assessor's department, especially with the recent hire, and there have been some salary and hourly changes, we have been assured that the staffing as it is, the hours as it is, is enough to perform the work. So, this is frankly, new news to us, we haven't seen any explanation of why there's an increase in work. in work. We, we heard the same similar situation last spring, and then we did do some adjustment with hours and salary to help with that. And it seems to be reoccurring. So we thought we addressed the issue, but I don't know. It just seems, please, you know, it's a request for funds, but there's no real backup of why. And it's a 50% increase in hours for an admin.
Well, since we don't have a reason, could we leave it in there and maybe somebody will show up at the town meeting and explain? And if they don't, then we, is that a possibility?
Hi, Janet Kane, 83 Glendale Road, also from the Finance Committee. When we, the assessor's office did come to us or the Board of Assessors requesting a higher pay rate for the principal assessors. And part of the justification was to take that out of the clerk's then wage line because the feeling was they didn't need them in there for more than 16 to 19 hours per week. So that was one confusing issue for us to understand what changed. And the other thing was, I know they got a couple of years ago, a software upgrade that automated a lot of their work. And at that time, the then clerk made a statement that that would relieve her workload by 40%. So I'm just, and then we'd also have to consider benefits if we increase above 19 hours a week. So I don't, I'm not comfortable just tabling or just leaving it there for further explanation because I think it's important that we understand fully why the Finance Committee didn't support it.
There's nobody here for that.
No, there's been no voice from the assessor's office to me about this. Not that they need to talk to me independently or finance. So I'm just looking at the fact that it's like the police administrator. We're only talking a few months here before we go into the new budget anyways. So I think just striking the article and moving forward would be the most expeditious way of dealing with this one.
Another item to consider is the art, is the position itself is not approved for more than 19 hours. So it is a part-time position and realistically, you should go before PGV to adjust the hours.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion to strike this article?
So moved.
Second.
Aye. Good move. Article 17, additional funding for the police department overtime. This is a simple transfer in the department of $35,000 from police wages to overtime wage line item. In other words, it's not coming out of free cash or anything like that. It's in their budget. Any questions?
No.
Nope.
Article 18, additional funding for police building expenses, which we used to call the old town hall. This is in the amount of $6,000 because there's been some increases in maintaining that building. This was tabled by the Finance Committee, so I guess we'll entertain the information from Finance. Or Vicky?
Vicky Morrow, Town Accountant, Palmory Meadow Road. Mike Goyet, the chief, and I sat down to go over, you know, what his building expense account would look like at the end of the year. During the middle of the year, he had a $3,900 bill to fix the condenser on the air conditioner, which wasn't anticipated. When we did the budget for FY 17, they took last year's actual that we paid in '16 to be the budget for '17. But as we know, that building is kind of run down and things happen and whatnot. But the other piece would be that if you, so when we use '16 numbers, last year was a very mild winter. And so I would bet on the fact that we probably won't have another mild winter like we did last year. So your cost for your gas is going to go up this year. Currently, our energy, NG, which used to be GDF Suez and EverSource bills are higher on a per-month average this year than they were last year. So right there between the gas and the electric year bills are going to be increasing. You know, the electricity is approximately $200 per month higher average year-to-date with those two companies, which were, which would be about $2,400 more you'd need this year. And there'd be, it's probably about $1,200 depending on what the elect, the gas does with the heat and all that. And with the $3,900 that he spent on the condenser, you know, he'll be short approximately, you know, between $5,000 and $6,000. So that's where we came up with that figure for that.
This building sounds like a great candidate for the green community grants to upgrade it, to make it more energy efficient. If that passes, our solar bylaw passes, we'll be able to get some grants to probably installation windows and things like that. That might be a great opportunity.
You know, you're talking $1,200 a month for electricity alone. So that's, that's the reason for the additional funds. And so now that he has this background and a year of budgeting under his belt, we can do a better job of budgeting for that building in '18.
Would not, I'm going to make the motion that we recommend.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying?
We're comfortable leaving it on one?
Yes.
Okay. Article 20, transfer to the Board of Health Budget $10,000 because of the unique circumstance of.
Did you skip 19?
You skipped 19, yeah.
Did I? 19.
Transfer from free cash to fund the police chief cola for FY 2016 in the amount of $1,246.32. Basically, there was a lag period between the time he was appointed acting chief and he actually got a contract as chief. During that period of time, all the town employees got a colonel for this, and he was omitted. This is to correct that.
It says simple majority. Town council, I had two-thirds there since we are, I had nine tenths, I'm sorry, because it's a prior year obligation. Town council said, no, simple majority for this. Putting it into the current wage account, even though it covers prior year.
Finance has recommended this. Olson?
It's classic. So the funding is going to FY 17 wage account?
Yes.
So it is not, so it's a lump sum payout?
Yes. Even though technically, it's a cola for the prior fiscal year, putting it into the current wage account for fiscal '17. That's why we don't need to have a nine tenths vote on that. We can just go with the simple majority.
So it'll be, it'll be a lump sum payout, not necessarily an adjustment?
That's right.
Yeah, just one time only.
Article 20, transfer to the Board of Health Budget $10,000 for basically unanticipated workload that's developed with them. Finance has recommended this. Any questions?
I have a comment from Finance. Janet Kane, 83 Glendale. Some of us on the committee had voted, voted yes because it wasn't a recurring expense and that it was extraordinary circumstances. So therefore, we had requested that it read, a supplemental wage line would be created, not the increase to the health department wage line. So we would need to, I requested that change be.
Change that motion? Bob?
Okay, we have to change the article.
That's what I said. It's not recurring already.
It's a supplemental wage line item in the Board of Health. Good catch, Janet. I remember the conversation.
I know that Vicky has to do that, I guess, create this item, but it's certainly not part of the wage for next year. So we want to make sure it's separated out.
Yeah, I have to create a wage line, not have to create an Ed Center. It's kind of, I guess, my only question would be, you know, concerned, what point do you decide you're gonna, I mean, is this, yeah.
For this year.
No, I know, I, I.
Wait the first wage line and then before you move to the, can you do that? And then move to supplement after that?
Well, I guess I don't, I have to think about that. Because it's, I can't have two wage line items for the same people for the same thing.
Well, we can modify this on the floor if we need to.
Yeah, I have to, I have to look at that. So you want a separate.
Yes, let's, some members will approve it based on that.
Yeah, I had to, I had to think about that for a few minutes here.
How does it work with the highway with the winter road wages versus other wages? Is that something state required?
Yes, yes. Because we have to fund highway, winter road wages and winter road expenses based on the previous year. Otherwise, you don't, you can't run a deficit.
So I should put in supplemental and then on the floor?
Yeah, okay.
Some members will approve it.
I understand that, but we don't have the answer right now. But we need to put the articles together. So it's like.
Yeah, we'll put it as you approved it. If you approved it that way, that's the way we'll present it.
Yeah, all right. Let me just, just make sure I have all my ducks in a row before I comment.
Thank you.
All right. Article 21, transfer from Edwards Library HB system. They need an additional $9,382 to finish their HB system. Basically, they're redoing the HB system there. They discovered they had some controls and other pieces of equipment that we needed to be done that they didn't discover until we got into the crawl spaces and all the rest of that. So this is a motion to fund that so that we can complete this. The contractors are standing by because they had the project started. It's tabled by Finance. So I sent Finance everything that I could get my hands on and break it out yesterday and today. So, Mike, you've got the floor.
I would open it to our, to our committee. Are there other questions or comments? We do have the breakdown of the material, the cost.
I felt that the breakdown was pretty inadequate. It just said parts and labor. There was no identification by part number, no breakdown of hours. It's really hard to understand if that's even a reasonable quote for the job when there's no scope provided or breakdown of the hours to be put forth. And when you add up the $20,000 spent for repairs in 2015, the 6,000, $67,000, which is the latest quote to upgrade the system, plus this $10,000, you're $97,000 to upgrade an HVAC system. But I would call it a small bill. I'm wondering if due diligence was applied and if some quotes were analyzed by qualified consultants. Because that number seems really outrageous.
Can I just make clarification? The original amount was $47,000. Then we appropriated another 20 and then this. So it's not 90, it's only.
Well, the $20,000 referred to the emergency repairs. Okay, so take that out of your.
Yeah, so it was 47 originally, then the 20 that we just did last in October, and then this 93.
So it's $77,000 plus you paid a consultant.
47 and 20, so 67. And then the 93, there was 6,800 bucks we appropriated for the consultant.
So it's still what, $85,000 to upgrade the HVAC?
If you include this $9,300, you have 67, 93.
Is the public allowed to say anything during this? No? Okay. So without seeing all the documents in front of me, but having prior institutional, educational, construction management experience for large, commercial, large buildings, to fully upgrade a system at a cost of 80 to $90,000 in a building of that size is actually not that astronomical. You do run into, you know, upcharges for change orders. You do have a contract around property to do the work. So it does cost money. It does cost overhead. There are premiums to do that. But, you know, I, I think you either, you run the risk of paying even more if you don't go with the contractor on site. You know, in my opinion, I think it's, without seeing all the document, documentation, it does seem reasonable. We are paying prevailing wage. They could be union, union fitters, union workers, which would be even higher than prevailing wage. I mean, you're talking at some people who make 50, 60, 70 dollars an hour for doing some of the work. So that's something to keep in mind.
I'd like to make the motion to recommend.
I'll second. Is there any other questions, comments?
I have a question.
Heather Pellegrini, Finance Committee, 76 Glendale Road. My question is, were there three quotes obtained and were those analyzed? And, that's my question. Were the three quotes obtained for this upgrade of the HVAC system that's costing this town almost $100,000? That's my question.
Yes.
Yes, it went through the whole process. This is basically a discovered problem during the process of doing the repairs.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Staying?
So this is recommended by Finance. Board want to keep it on the warrant?
Yes.
Jamie Olson?
Yes, I'm good with it.
Okay. Article 22, transfer to the town, to the tax title account, $3,000. This is basically for properties that are in debt to the town so that the town can proceed with foreclosure on delinquent taxes. I'm going to make sure, but I believe Finance recommended it.
Yes.
So keep it on the article. Article 23, transfer from the purchase of defibrillators. I believe this is five defibrillators. Cost is $4,300. Basically, to upgrade the ambulances, the police cruisers, and I believe town hall too, if I remember right. Finance has recommended this. Any questions?
No.
No.
Article 24, transfer to purchase of turnout gear for the fire department in the amount of $9,000. Turnout gear is the fire clothing that the firemen wear. This is a normal expense in town. Finance Committee has recommended it. Any thoughts? If not.
Good.
Article 25, Mike, you might as well get up to the podium. Traffic safety assessment for the Norris Elementary School. There was a request through the Highway Department and the Police Department to have a traffic study, given the parking situations that are occurring down there. This money was to be used to hire a professional consultant to evaluate the situation and to advise the town on how to address this. This article was not approved by the Finance Committee.
Correct. So we did not recommend Article 25, and we did not recommend based on two premises. One, the school should look into the situation first and see if there's something that can be done locally. You know, something done in the area. We had individuals speak out who have firsthand experience in the situation, how it used to be and how it is today and how it seemed to work smoother previously. I don't have children that go there, so I can't necessarily speak to that. But we had individuals with firsthand knowledge. The other item why we're not recommending this is, how do you fix some, you know, how do you fix something like this? You have a large capital expenditure to fix it. There's not necessarily room to create another pickup lane on, on a side street. There's not room to build Charlie's idea of a parking garage, right? There's no room for a bigger parking lot.
I tend to stop and think.
You know, we, we didn't recommend, based on the fact that before we hire someone for 5,000, can we look internally, look locally, see if there's something we can do? I say we, something the Highway and the Police Department and the School Department can do to, to fix that. Because the fear is, we hire a consultant for $5,000 and they tell us that you need to spend 30. And we, where, where does that 30 come from? Where does the 40? And we, where, where does that 30 come from? Where does the 40 or the 50 come from that they may recommend, so?
Well, my concern is, I've had the Police Chief and the Highway Superintendent express this concern that they felt that a professional company needed to be called in to try to give some ideas. The fresh eyes might take and help us. But the other side of that is, the way I look at it is, if this article went in front of the board, went in front of the town, it would give the town the opportunity to chime in, and it would make the issue more apparent to the town that we need to do something. Because it's mostly the town residents that are creating the problem. That said, even if the money was allocated to hire someone, there is still timeframe for people in the town to come up with a solution. So even though you allocate money, doesn't necessarily mean you spend that money if you come up with something. But I, and this is probably the only article that I disagree with, with the Finance Committee. I think this article needs to go in front of the Town Meeting Floor. But I don't know how the Board feels.
Who originated this? Where'd it come from? Was there...
Police and Highway. Police and Highway came to us, asked for an article.
Okay, well, my kids did attend the school, William E. Norris in Hampshire Regional, and I have heard over the years there is some safety issues and concerns about the traffic. And I would, I would like to keep that study.
Yeah. God forbid if we didn't do this and a kid got hurt, a child got hurt. I think we should at least put it in front of the townspeople, and let's see what they say.
Do I hear a motion to keep this article? Just so this is on the record?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Bob, do not strike Article 25. With all due respect to the Finance Committee. Article 26. Additional hours for Highway Department Administrative Assistant. This is $4,360.20. This is an internal transfer. This is not out of free cash, very similar to what we saw with the Police Department with overtime wages. Finance Committee has recommended it. Any questions, thoughts? If not, we'll move into the next one. Article 27. Removal of a gasoline storage tank at the Highway Department. I show a number here of $25,000. I'm, show a notation that the Finance Committee is waiting for further information. And so am I. Has the Finance Committee heard anything?
No, we were told that the Chair of the Select Board would receive information by the meeting.
The Chair of the Select Board has been wandering as a nomad in this town and has not heard anything.
I spoke with the Highway Superintendent yesterday. He is actively seeking three bids for the project. And the number he gave me to put in here was 25,000. I'm sure it's not accurate, but that's what we have to vote.
Then I would suggest that we keep this article so it does appear at Town Meeting.
The Finance Committee, make their recommendations before you vote.
But you don't have any information to make your recommendation.
We have to vote either way.
We will have a meeting prior to Town Meeting, so the information should be available that day.
Yeah.
So we can vote in our meeting on our recommendation, and then you can adjourn the announcement to moderator.
I don't see why not.
So this is an underground storage tank at the Highway Garage that is in noncompliance? That we will be fined if it is not removed? Is that what I was told?
It was determined last year that it was in, not in compliance. It's a double-wall tank, and the interior wall indicated that there may be a leak. So therefore, it's not in compliance. So we have to either physically remove the tank or fill it up with a concrete slurry mix. That's where this $25,000 floats around. And until the consultants come back to the Highway Superintendent and give real numbers, all we're doing at this point is putting this as an article in front of Town Meeting with the understanding by Town Meeting, we have a real dollar amount.
But it has been the moderator's past practice to not increase any dollar amounts on the Town Floor.
Right.
So if it comes in more than 25, more than likely, you know, like I said, his past practice has been not to change it to 30, so just keep that in the back of your brain.
I asked Randall about a week ago, is that 25 at the high end? And he believes so.
Okay, just throwing that out there.
Charlie, the old piece of information was rushed on this. It is a result of failed client for insurance coverage and being declined for this tank while they agreed cover as a diesel tank. So this tank is unsure. And obviously, the PD was taking his interest, so we're not required to do something.
Sooner than later.
Sooner, I'm sure.
Yeah.
I went on the DPD website and looked at their calendar reviews, and January 7th was their flag date to re-agree with this.
Yeah, so it sounds like it's a very important issue, and how can we assure, if it comes over to 26,000, that we're not going to be in trouble?
We can allocate the 25 and then have to find the other grants and so on, internal of budget.
I would almost say, I would make that 30, and then we can have at least, go somewhere south of that on the floor. We can amend it down, but not amend it up. It may be a wise thing to do, but... Right.
I'll let Heather talk. I'll just wait for you guys.
I'm patient. I just had a comment on the wording, Heather Pellegrini. The discussion came up that that tank currently sits next to a gas tank, and thus far, there would not be able to be removed, but rather filled. So I would suggest if that is true, the language should be modified slightly. If it in fact can't be removed.
You know, that's a good point. Probably for the stabilization of the gasoline storage tank. How's that work?
Removal slash...
In the discussion with the Highway Superintendent, this could be minimally costly, or it could be very costly. What they have to do is put someone in the tank or roll the bottom and test the soil underneath. The soil underneath is in good condition. It is minimally expensive just to fill the tank. If the soil is contaminated, the tank has to come out. It could cause complications with the other tank. It is going to be a very significant expense.
Did we have a previous insurance policy that covered this tank? Is that one still in effect because it's an old tank?
It's in effect until, no, I'm sorry, it's not in effect. It expired. And we first understood that this was a problem, and then they declined the coverage. I called them, and I got an explanation, and then Randall became involved, and this is where we are.
So if the tank hasn't been used, but there has been a leak, it would have been during the period of time in which they did insure the tank. So technically, they should be liable, even though the policy doesn't continue from now on forward. It would make sense. But I think we should up that to 30,000, and we can go down. We can always alter it and go down at the Town Meeting in...
I just have one question. If they, if they don't spend the 30,000, it comes in at 10?
The rest of it goes back to stabilization.
Okay.
Correct, yeah. So I'm just trying to cover ourselves.
It was never meant that here's $30,000, and if you can do it for 10, you get to keep 20. Yeah. Vicky would be all over that.
I'm not supposed to be well liked, so...
So seeing that the FinCom's going to wait until the meeting, I'll make a motion to take the 25 and bring it up to 30, and also change it to either remove slash stabilize. Does that make sense?
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Haley, did you get that?
And change wording to remove slash stabilize the tank.
Great catch on that wording.
Do you know how many catches there's been in these warrants? All right. Article 28. Return funds to the stabilization. $3,200 to the Operational Stabilization Fund. If you remember, we transferred into a salary item at last Town Meeting, $3,200 from stabilization account. It was pretty much implied that we would put that back into the stabilization account. That's what this article's about. I believe Finance is agreeable with this. So I'll just move on to the next unless there's a question.
Okay.
We're basically putting the money back in our rainy day account.
Yeah.
Article 28. Straw poll regarding plowing of private roads. 29?
Aye.
Did I skip one?
No, you did 28. You're just on 29 now.
Okay, Article 29. Straw poll regarding plowing of private roads. As you know, there's been an ongoing discussion about the fact that the town's plowing unacceptable roads. And if you go back to January of 2016, the Select Board formally voted to allow this to continue for a year until other avenues were found. Well, no other avenues were found, and the question comes up, do I hear a motion to continue this?
I think because we don't have the whole board here, we should table it for tonight.
Is the question you're asking, Charlie, to continue to plow or keep this on the warrant?
No, to keep it to plow. Then I'm going to talk about keeping it on the warrant.
Do you realize it's illegal, and you guys really have no authority to...
We're going on a war of the agenda too. The warrant was supposed to be before the discussion and the vote.
I would like to continue it on the warrant at this point, I think.
All right, we'll continue it on the warrant. Do we wish to keep Article 29 on the warrant?
You know, although it carries, it doesn't hold any water, but it's nice to know how the people feel, and I think that's important. Because it requires, I believe, it requires a vote, a ballot vote, correct, to adopt...
To adopt this, it's going to require a petition of 200 residents in the town to take and put this as a ballot question for the May Town Election.
Correct.
The purpose of this is to get this out so the town people know what's going on. If you don't watch these broadcasts on, on your cable channel, you don't really know that this discussion's even occurring.
I'm confused, Charlie. It's illegal. We shouldn't be having this discussion. It should stop immediately. It's against the law. There's no question about it.
This is not open time for...
I understand, but it's against the law. How can you make a judgment or ruling to break the law? I don't understand it.
So the question is, do you wish this to be kept on the warrant?
Yeah, I would leave it on there just to see what the townspeople feel. We definitely have to bring it to the town at the next election, so that's for sure. But hopefully, somebody will bring forward the signatures required to put that there.
Okay. Capital improvements. Article 30. Laptop computers for the William E. Norris School. $80,000 was requested by the School Department to take and upgrade their laptops for, basically, doing MCAS tests and all the rest of that. Finance...
So we do need to vote to recommend just for the next three capital items? Just putting that out there because there isn't a line here, so I didn't want us to move forward unless not.
Okay. The Capital Committee has recommended this, so I guess we'll hear from the Finance Committee.
Is there any questions? I know we did look at these quickly. We were waiting on Finance to review the capital items. They're going to be to have some changes in the funding. Is there questions or comments about these before we make a motion?
So capital improvement did need...
They met last night. They approved all three articles. Probably the only article that you'll need to pay attention to is the wood chipper.
Right.
Because that's coming out of stabilization grounded in, out of the Capital Committee.
So we're trying about that, we...
All right, how do we recommend purchase of laptop computers for the Norris School?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same?
The Board wish to keep this as an article?
Yes.
Yes.
Article 31. Wood chipper for Highway Department. This was a request for $46,000 to buy a wood chipper. The wood chipper that we presently have is 24 years old. It doesn't meet our needs. It doesn't have the safety equipment of current equipment, and the feeling was that we needed to have this. The discussion at the Capital Committee was that it be approved, but because Capital doesn't have this money, it was suggested and hoped that the Operating Stabilization Fund could be utilized to take and purchase this. Finance still has their opportunity to chime in now, I guess. That was a terrible way of segwaying that.
Do we have a spreadsheet that shows how much money we have left, and we do all the spending at the end of the day?
Yeah, Vicky back there.
I just did it today, yes. Want me to make some copies? Is it the purview of the Capital Improvement Committee to authorize funds for operating stabilization? Or do they only have purview over capital stabilization?
They have purview over capital stabilization. It doesn't appear that anybody has direct oversight of capital stabilization, of the state operational stabilization. It really falls, as far as I can tell, with the Select Board. But we look at your committee and that committee as advisory committees to us as to if this is a viable option. She ran out of here. You asked her a question. You bullied her.
It would be good for us to be made aware of the balances in all these accounts as of the day of the transfer of the operational funds from free cash. So we have a rule of balance.
Oh, yeah, I totally agree with you. Just, just an off-the-cuff, if you're going to go into operational stabilization, if we pull $46,000 out of it, remember, there's another article here where we're putting $150,000 into it, okay?
Well, that should be, yeah, part. I'm assuming that this is after that.
Right, but what I'm saying is, it's not like we're going into account and negating it. More like it was last year's money. It's so, but yes, absolutely, we need to know what those numbers are. You want to put that article on hold? We'll do the fire brush truck. Well, we're waiting for Vicky, because that one's coming out of Capital. Article 32. Fire Department Brush Truck. $88,620. The current brush truck is a 1984 Army Surplus model, and it's passed its useful life. The Capital Committee recommends that we transfer this money out of the Capital Wages and Stabilization Fund. It's due, without getting into details.
Is there questions, comments, concerns from the Finance Committee? Would they make a motion to recommend? Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same?
Does this Board move to move this Article 32 and keep it on the warrant?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, still holding on Vicky here, I guess. Want to go to Article 33?
Yeah, let's keep going.
Land purchase agreement.
Oh, hold on.
I would actually wait for 33 and 34, just for clarification on some things. When we originally reviewed it, there was...
She's back.
There was some language that hurt.
Just perfect delight.
Okay, we're going back to Article 31, the wood chipper, and the transfer of money, $46,000 out of the Operational Stabilization Fund to the Highway Department?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there, so we do have the numbers in front of us. The potential, all potential articles in the warrant would leave $343,852 in operating stabilization. Is there any questions?
I'm sorry?
Should he say it to Mike just for the townspeople here? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. We lost that.
Just stand here, that's fine. So in front of us, we do have the balance of the operating stabilization account with the three potential articles, Article twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and thirty-one in the warrant. If all three are approved at town meeting, it would leave three hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars in the operating stabilization count.
Yeah.
Yeah, change that to thirty-nine.
Correct, so we had three hundred and thirty-nine?
Yeah.
Thirty-nine thousand. I would make a motion to recommend. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay.
This is the first time that I hear on the warrant that people have gone to the capital committee for these projects, and we've actually funded all of them.
That's good. Very good.
Article thirty-three, land purchase easement off Coleman Road East Side. This is for the water department, for the water department to take and establish a pumping station there. Mike, you had questions? Bob, you have some answers?
So I know there was possible language changes here. I was just hoping to be informed if there have been any. For at least thirty-three and thirty-four, there's been confusion over, you know, what the easements were for, so I would defer to Bob and Charlie.
The questions haven't been answered at this point. There's another item too that's been pointed out by town council. And they also mentioned that you should go to bond council.
Okay.
Too many times when you authorize borrowing, you haven't cleared with the bond council. They find problems. And you just don't list borrow a sum of money.
Right.
Put a number in there. I don't have that number at this point.
Okay.
That's true for West Side and East Side.
Is that, is that similar to the regular town council recommendation? What was their holdback on these? Was it the bonding issue, or was it something different?
Yes, yes, their recommendation, kind of standard thing, send it to bond council.
Okay.
When you go into the capital markets, and then to those who, the lenders who wanna ask bond council what they think. For better or worse, they can be fairly pinnicky about this.
Okay.
About language.
One thing we did bring up as a question at our meeting, and Charlie was there, was the authorization for the acquiring of the property, whether the authorization should be Board of Water Commissioners and/or Board of Selectmen, should it be Board of Selectmen only? I mean, we are essentially purchasing property for the town. If the water commission ever dissolved, if it was ever privately purchased or held, what, what happens to the property at that point? So I, have we had any information on that? I could be off base with the question.
There is a question as to who has eminent domain authority?
Who, who is the acquirer of the land? And is it an and/or situation, or is it a specific?
Specifically, it depends again on whether or not the town has accepted. Two enabling statutes. One of them gives water commissioners eminent domain authority, which means they would do it and they would own it. If not, then the town would have to do it and the town would own it.
Okay. Do we know if we have adopted those statutes? I don't mean to put you on the hot seat, Bob, but?
We don't know officially. I suspect not.
Okay.
Which opens up the question, should we push this to the May Town Meeting?
We're just tabled because we don't have the answers.
One of the things bond coun, uh, town council said is that there's a lot of complexity here, and it's kind of negative also.
Okay.
Particularly questions of cost.
Then, would I hear a motion to strike Article thirty-three and thirty-four?
Yeah, it seems probably the right thing to do at this point, so. Yeah, I'll make a motion to table thirty-three and thirty-four at this time and?
I'll strike them from?
Be stricken from the warrant.
Stricken from the warrant. Correct, yeah.
Second.
I happen to agree that it would be more than that. So, all in favor, strike Article thirty-three, thirty-four?
Aye.
Billy, thirty-three and thirty-four, take them off the warrant? No, I agree with you. I try not to second anything. All right, so now we're to Article thirty-five, replacement of the water main using the enterprise account. And they, this does not come out of the town general budget, it's a hundred thousand dollars. This is basically for our safe routes to school sidewalk installation between Palmer Meadow Road and Parkway. If we're going to have the state redoing Route ten, putting in crosswalks and everything else, this is the time to upgrade those water lines. The water commissioners agree with that. They need the authorization to spend the money to do that. Finance has recommended it. Does this board have a question or concerned about this?
No questions.
Okay, then I'm moving to Article thirty-six, water system improvement. This is a motion for two million, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars to pay for cost of design, construction of the water system improvement for the town. The finance committee tabled this because they wanted more information from the water commissioners.
So like we discussed at the meeting, Charlie, this is a large sum of funds to be appropriated for a five-year plan, to which we hadn't seen the five-year plan, at least the finance committee hadn't. I'm not aware of the Select Board if you had or had not. We did request the plan from the water commission, we did receive the plan, it was a one, I think, one or two-page overview of what the plan was. My apprehension on a sort of personal chairman level of this is, it's a large sum of money that we'd vote to appropriate, that ratepayers pay for, but they may not even be aware of, this is what you're getting, you know? I feel like there should be some sort of public presentation, and maybe there is. I don't receive town water bills, but some sort of public outreach. This is what we're looking to do with two point seven million, because on the town meeting floor, people may just see this as, you're, you're taking two point seven million of my taxes and using it for something else. You know, it, it just seems like there needs a little, a little bit of information behind it.
Annual town meeting, it should go to a special town, just because the amount of money we're talking about in one.
That's, that's a great solution. I think it's, it allows the water commission to do some sort of outreach, it allows the Select Board to be well-informed of the project, and I mean, it will drastically impact probably other areas in the town as well. You know, we're talking possible highway influence, highway department influence, depending on labor and, and things going on in the town. You know, road construction, those types of matters, so.
Were there any comments with town council on this?
Is there a motion to strike this? Oh, Vicky wants to speak.
She found the money.
No, I didn't find the money.
Look at this.
So. The, the water commissioners were trying to just, by putting this article on, this meeting's warrant was just to get the approval to potentially borrow that amount of money in the future. The reason that this came up was because we have two loans that are astronomical in interest. We're paying five point six five percent interest, and we're paying back twice as much money in interest than what we borrowed. And they're like thirty, thirty-five year loans. And so it came up that we were hoping to refinance those two loans. But you can't just refinance those two loans because it's not really worth the effort and the energy and all that to save potential money. So they were working on their five-year plan, they were looking at their debt that they already pay out of that enterprise fund. So Mike is correct in that the, um, people who pay their water bills would be paying for this, um, these potential, um, this potential cost, which is already included in the rate that they increase, the rate base that they've already increased, the rates that they've already increased, would incorporate this potential money. And so in order to borrow enough money to refinance those two loans, they came up with their five-year plan and, and potential whatever, I haven't looked at it in detail. But this was just to get the approval to say, yeah, we wanna be able to borrow this money. It might not be all in one lump sum, it might be over a course of a year until we actually go out to, um, I don't know the terminology rates, this is really Donna's field, but I'm trying to understand it as I go along. You know, we put it out to bid, not to bid, but to bond it all together. So that's kind of where this derived from. It's not saying, oh, we're gonna borrow two point seven million bucks tomorrow. They wanna just be able to start those projects sooner than later.
But no one said this to us.
I, I'm just throwing out there what I know. By being, sitting with the financial advisor and Donna and the water commissioners and whatnot, that's kind of where the whole, and this wording came directly from the financial advisors, and he passed it through bond council, so there shouldn't be any problem with the wording, I believe. So, yes.
So were you saying that we're consolidating the two higher interest loans?
And borrowing more money?
And then so that we can pay them off early?
At a lesser rate?
Correct, and at the same time borrow more money to do other projects.
So don't you think we deserve something like that right now?
I, I, not disagreeing with you, I'm just trying to give you an explanation of where this is coming from and what I know by sitting in, you know, a few particular types of meetings, because, you know, when you borrow four hundred thousand bucks and your interest is a million, it's, it's kind of a lot of money. So.
I mean, the concept, the concept is very good.
Correct.
But I think the details are, I think, for us to make a recommendation as well.
And again, this i- is strictly gonna come out of, you know, the ratepayers, and they already incorporated that in their rates that they've kind of come up with so far, so, but that's the information that I have.
That helps. Or is it going to down because you're reducing the interest right now, is that what you're saying?
No. No, because you're gonna borrow more money for other projects in terms of, if our well dies, we're recording the town on that half walk. So.
Make the well set in the town more valuable.
Bob's mic?
I agree with you on the annual town meeting, I think it allows, it allows this article to be more viable, it allows it to be understandable by the ratepayers, because you can show them the figures, you can show them what you will save, what the improvements will be, where the improvements will be. I think this brings us down the road of the previous articles for a million dollars to pay for things, right? That we haven't had good luck in the past. This is two point seven million for improvements and reconsolidating and, you know, conglomerating our loans and, and getting a better interest rate, but it doesn't really explain what it is, and you may have the same negative, negative feedback. If you allow the time to, allow the time for them to explain it, for everyone to see it, it could be a better, better outcome.
But they might be at the town meeting to explain it, they're just not here tonight. I mean, I mean, they usually kind of should already?
The process, I mean, the process has been for articles to come before the Select Board, before the Finance Committee. We historically request backup information, documentation. This, this isn't a new process, if anything, it's become even more thorough in the last two to three years, so I, you know, maybe this is a point where we make a note for the next town meeting that we should set stricter requirements for articles? Sort of a, do you have your checklist filled out before you submit your article? One of those being backup information. I mean, we are, we are?
This is a huge art.
Yeah.
This isn't like we're talking about, you know, transferring four hundred bucks or something.
Right, and, you know, and to the point of it going before the, the voters and the ratepayers, we are elected to help guide the town. If we don't have the right information, how can we intelligently vote to guide the, the voters who may be there, who may not have all that information, so.
So there's a motion on the floor to strike this article?
Well, are you gonna vote on it first? Do they still have to vote on it, are you voting to strike it?
If you have a motion to strike, I would continue.
Okay.
Strike one, four.
Yeah, I think it's premature on this one, so I would vote to strike Article thirty-six.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Billy, you got that?
I have it, and we're down to thirty articles, not thirty-six. Before you adjourn, I, I'm not clear where the finance committee stands on the straw poll.
We, we felt that was not within our purview.
Because of the recommendation.
It is essentially a possible bylaw change, adoption in the town, we do not recommend that.
Okay, then I guess we are going to vote to accept the warrant for special town meeting as modified. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's been approved. Bob, you have a signature page for us? I only kept me the signature page, and we'll get this going. Just to know, the Selectmen's meeting is not over with. Just the entertaining side of it. We are now on to?
Supposed to be almost done.
Yeah.
The warrant? You want some PCF?
There's no PCFs. This is supposed to have been a meeting for the warrant issue.
Right, so I think?
Okay, so basically we got one more thing, and that's basically the discussion of plowing. And then after that?
That's on, that's on here?
No, it's, it was, but I don't see it on here, but it was supposed to be on here. And then we're gonna go into executive session.
Is the public allowed to speak now, or no?
Well, I'm sort of waiting for everybody to clear out.
I'd rather have everyone here. Yeah, no, that's, that's?
Hands here.
I, I, I just wanna remind you guys that I, I don't even see how you can vote on this. I mean, it is against the law. The oath that you guys take is to follow the bylaws and the state laws.
For the audience, you wanna explain what you're talking about?
Okay.
So they know what you're talking about?
Dan Pala Greenie, seventy-six Crookledge Road, and I've been driving the fact that we plow public ro, private roads since May, and really haven't gotten a solid answer, seems to be getting pushed to the side and pushed to the side. And I've done research, there is a state law out there that prohibits this, and we should have stopped it years and years ago. When you voted in January for it, that was an illegal vote, you shouldn't have been able to continue that. And, and, you know, we're worried about getting sued because of traffic by the school, but yet we haven't checked our rider for insurance if a plow hits a car on a private road, if a plow hits a child on a private road. We haven't looked at that. On top of that, you guys are exposing yourselves personally, I have to believe, because if you willingly break the law, vote to break the law, I don't see how the town council and the town's budget should defend that in court. I mean, at the end of the day, there is a law out there that says this is illegal. We've known it's been illegal for a long time, it should be stopped. There is a process to follow to, if we wanna do that. And, and Jim is right, two hundred votes on a, or two hundred signatures on a position that can come to be voted on. And then that gives you guys the authority to designate which roads can be done. But at the end of the day, it has to stop. I just paid a hundred and fifty dollars to plow my, my shared driveway the other day. I've been plowing Quigley Road on my own, which is, again, hopefully gonna be another town road.
town road, and watching the plow drive by. Why am I discriminated against as a citizen of this town compared to all the other people that are getting their private ways plowed for free? This should not even be a discussion. It should be shut down, done, and then if we want to continue it, brought forward. And so that's my question to the board, is how can you guys vote yes or no on this? We really don't have an authority. It should be, just like when I identified the church next door, the first thing you guys came out of your mouth is, you're right, it's wrong, let's stop it. Why are we not doing that on these private roads? That is a question. Why, why, why are we not following the law?
Does the board wish to entertain this question tonight?
I am not prepared to vote either way tonight, so...
Yeah, I think I'd like to table it, as I said before, at the wrong time, pardon me, to wait for the rest of the board to be here.
Yeah, I think just pulling the plug on something at this point, I think there's a process to go through. We have to go through the process to either accept or not accept the law. I'm not making a decision to vote, I mean, to plow or not to plow. The town has been doing that for thirty years. We have to, we have to get resolution on this one way or the other. And I'm ready to do that, but I want the town to make that decision.
But Jim, there's a law there. And your oath that you took does not allow you to break the law. And, and we've known it's been against the law, why does it not stop? That's just like anyone stealing. So, so the last fire chief, apparently that was an issue, and that's why he was removed from his position. He broke the law. Why are we not adhering to the law? There is no discussion in question. It is black and white, it is a law. This is against the law and we're ignoring it. And, and by ignoring it does not get rid of the liability, does not take the problem away. I mean, and it's not really, and with all due respect to the board, it's not really three, four, or five people's decision to go against the law. You, you don't have the authority, you don't have the ability, and the laws are not selective. And Jim, I have to sort of disagree with what you just said. You, you can't vote to whether adhere to the law or not, the law is the law. And, and that's what the confusing part is, is why do I have to come in here so many times with the same thing, keep going down that same road? You're concerned about liability everywhere else, but you're not concerned with sending up one of our plows onto a private road with no insurance on it? I, I just don't understand. I don't understand why this is even a discussion. And what happens if there is a problem before it stops? Who's going to pay for that? Have we checked our insurance policy?
Does the board wish to vote on this? Yeah, vote on this tonight, because I mean, it's going to take a vote, if we're going to vote to take and instruct the harbor department not to do this. Or do you wish to table this until the tenth, when we should have a full...
You can take a vote, but I'll abstain, I'm not prepared to vote on that tonight. Put it on the next meeting and we can talk about it. But I'm not prepared tonight to do this.
Do I hear a motion for the next meeting?
Yes.
Next meeting, the tenth, Tuesday. We have a meeting tomorrow, so we're worried about a forum, that's not going to take place.
Right, and everybody should be here on the tenth.
And we also, I mean, is there someone that we can contact to verify the law, to verify our liability, to notify these people that you're not going to be, if you've been plowing their street for thirty years and you stop, there's got to be some notification there because then if you don't plow it, you've been doing it for thirty years, you don't plow it, and then somebody gets hurt, is liability fall the other direction? So we have to proceed cautiously, it's a very difficult thing. They've been doing it for an awful long period of time. And I think just to cold turkey, shut it off, we have to address it. I agree with you there, but how we address it is very important.
My concern is, I hear you, Jim, a cold turkey. I brought it to May, I just learned today that you voted on it last January. So, and you keep kicking the can down the track each time, and I brought up the liability four or five months ago and no one's looked at the insurance policy. I brought the law and actually showed the law and Heather read the law to everyone here. I've contacted the inspector general and, and he's clearly told me that this is against the law. There is no question out there, we are breaking the law. And, and, and Jim, the other part I'm going to disagree with you is we haven't been doing it for thirty years. This net circle is not thirty years old.
Oh, there's, kind of jab is over thirty years.
Understood.
There are streets out there, so...
And then the last thing I would say is, can we list in this article, I know you already signed it, but you're not even telling the town what roads we're talking about. So no one even knows what we're talking about over here. We don't know if it's one road, two roads.
The hope was, or the plan was to take and have a list at town meeting so people would actually be able, when they go in here to vote, to see what roads we're talking about. We didn't want to put it on a warrant article because we're trying to keep the warrant articles succinct to the question as possible without making it look like it's going to be a twelve-page narrative on each topic. That said, can you talk to town council and ask town council what would be the proper approach if we discontinue this?
Sure.
The problem with that is going to be, the answer is, today, today's Thursday, he doesn't work Friday, so if he asks the town council Monday, doesn't mean we're going to have an answer Tuesday night.
I understand, and my fear is every time I walk away and don't get verbal, it seems to just get pushed on the table. And it's just not right. It's just not right for the amount of citizens in this town that have to maintain their own roads. It's just absolutely not right.
Part of the problem, and I'm not making excuses, because we're all volunteers here, this is not like our full-time job to do this and we're working with our time town administrator now. And there are other topics on the table.
I, I understand, I understand, but when you're breaking the law and we know we're breaking the law, shouldn't that come to the top of the list? And shouldn't that be addressed? I mean, we all get concerned with liabilities. I hear Randall talk about liabilities and getting sued and fear of getting sued. We're not worried about a plow slamming into someone on a private road, not even knowing if our insurance will cover it.
Dan, you've been heard.
Thank you.
We'll pick it up on the tenth.
Well, I think that may be a little soon, just what came about. I would like to, we've got to get legal guidance on how to proceed because just stopping after some roads only a few years, some roads thirty years, there's got to be a process. We've got to be guided in how to do this. Right, so that might not be ready for the tenth. So putting on the, oh yeah, we can talk about it, but there won't be much to talk about because we won't have an answer by then.
Well, then let's be very candid about this. If we don't talk about it on the tenth and we don't get any information, then the next selectman's meeting is the night of the special town meeting.
I have an answer, if we meet earlier in the meeting, I have no problem in talking about it then. But long as we have guidance from legal on what to do.
I'll talk to the town council, so don't attempt to get guidance. This is not a problem unique to the town of South Hamlet, every city, the town in Commonwealth has a version of this problem, one way or another. Truth is that it is against the law, but the Commonwealth has turned a blind eye to every community for decades in the interest of public safety, which is the other side of court. Communities have been plowing private ways, not all of them, but some live in town, historically to enable ambulances and police and fire apparatus in the wintertime to access residents who need help. And so it's, you have interest in conflict here.
But that only some residents that are, they're only worthy of public safety?
Well, that's the other, that's the other bizarre part of this, that, you know, it's a real...
We can debate this online, we can debate it online, we, we, I need to get this into executive session on some other stuff.
And, and guys, I'm just not going to drop it because the amount of money I spend and the amount of time that I deal with plowing my own roads, and, I mean, who's, what if I just say I'm not going to plow my roads anymore? Can I pick up the phone and call Randall and say, get up here because I don't feel well and I need an ambulance in here? I mean, it, there's laws for a reason. And that's all I'm saying is, and the state actually recognized that this could be an issue, it has put a way to go around the law. And that's all I'm saying is, guys, if the town wants to continue to do this, let's get it in front of them, but there is no reason why we know it's a law and we continue to do it. You're exposing yourselves, I would think personally, you check with the town council and see if you're personally getting exposed by allowing this to happen. You're exposing us financially by allowing it to happen. And quite honestly, you're upsetting a lot of the residents that have to do this on their own. And it really feels like I'm being discriminated against. So I've said my piece and...
Thank you.
I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Unless there's something else, then I move this committee into executive session. Under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty, Section twenty-one, Number three, to conduct strategy sessions, negotiations with respect to litigation. Roll call, vote?
It's yours, I.